Yeah, I started it. Really? Um, yeah, but I don't see. Let's see here, I don't see.
I think people are all on the link that you have.
Well, yeah, but I don't see. So, oh, yeah. I'm getting there. Okay, everybody's admitted.
Hello, everybody.
Hello.
Denise is frantically letting everybody in that's joining this meeting.
Thank you, Denise. Everyone looks so camera ready. We learned from our last Zoom meeting that got the picture that got published in the newspaper. All look great.
I just texted Nancy.
Okay, yeah, I wasn't sure if she was trying to get into the meeting or not. Denise is Nancy in a waiting room somewhere. Do you see her anywhere? Oh, there she is. Yay. Okay, looks like everybody's here. We good to go? Okay. Great. Well, we will call the meeting to order. Thank you. Thank you, everyone for being here. Thanks for your flexibility with the change of date and venue and platform and time. So, thank you. The first item on the agenda is citizens' comments. Do we have any citizens who wish to comment? I don't see anybody from the public here today. Okay. All right. Next is superintendent report. Mr. Berry?
Yeah, thank you. And thanks for making the time. I think we have some things that we want to make sure that we get done this meeting and we added an exciting action item for the preschool. It'll talk about here in a little bit, but I want to update you on a couple of things. We have, over the last couple of months, have had our school resource officer at the high school. We did interviews and then they, Kaylin and her team went through a kind of interview process with kids and staff, and I think we've selected our SRO for the future. And so it's in kind of the Phoenix PD's hands to make that transition. I don't anticipate a transition until the start of fall. Sergeant Hull will continue to oversee the SRO program, which is great. And I think this is a SRO that has done it before in a smaller district, was up in Butte Falls, has been with the PD of Phoenix for a while, and is very passionate. And this is kind of a dream job for him. So appreciate Kaylin and her team to really kind of make sure we can continue to vet who we have in. Also want to thank Rick for participating in those interviews. So appreciate it, Rick. Update on the tennis courts. We are in the swing of tennis season with 20 plus female tennis players, which is awesome. We continue to do committing and we're going out for bids here soon. The timeline for that will be starting in fall, and by this time next year, we'll be playing tennis on our campus, which will be gigantic. And I anticipate that will open the door to a boys tennis team too, as there'll be some interest, I think, when they see tennis right on our campus. So I really appreciate John and his work on that. Really appreciate the board's participation in the last work session. Just Kelly's EDI report was great. We did not have nearly enough time. And but really commend her for her and her team for putting that together. And then discussing the Culver property with the City of Talent. They did request that we do a little more outreach and some information. So Joe is putting out some information on our website and on social media that will have the Phase One and Phase Two report, the link to the work session, just the City of Talent work session piece and some information from Jonathan as well, the consultant. So we will put that out. It might go out as early as possibly tonight or this week for sure. So in anticipation for our meeting on the 17th. Finally, I want to just share some preschool options and some exciting things about really offering a preschool option in our district, and this is coming to fruition in many ways. One of which that you will be deciding on tonight about our partnership with Family Nurturing Center and looking at modulars behind the high school and taking that on ourselves. And it's going to be a no cost of general funds based on the preschool promised dollar. So really excited to have a potential preschool there that we run. And then Ashland YMCA, I've mentioned that they are very interested in getting a preschool in our talent community.
Now, she is Rick Nagel, my name.
Brett, hang on one second. I just want to make sure. Rick, can you hear us? Okay?
I think that's why he had Yolanda's help. I'll try texting her.
Yeah, okay. Rick, if you can, if you can hear me. Oh, okay. Good. I think they can hear us. Okay.
Rick, can you hear us?
See, I don't see a sound thing. Did you ever have a sound on this?
I never tried to. This is a first.
If you, if you use your mouse and hover over the top right-hand corner, three dots will appear. And hi, okay, there you can see us. Oh, they triggered it up.
Yolanda, can you hear us? I don't think they can hear.
Do we want somebody to call to try to see if they can hear through a speaker for?
Yeah, yeah. Why don't we just take a quick recess?
Okay.
Yeah. Let's see. Who could we have cook a call, Rick?
I can do it.
Okay, I can pull him on my phone, so it doesn't have to go through you to him, so he can hear me just.
So, okay, sounds good.
If he doesn't answer, I can text Yolanda.
Okay. Thank you.
So we're, we're on with Rick. He is listening through the phone, but he can see everybody and we can see Rick. And, and Rick, we just we just, do you want me to kind of continue and do a quick wrap?
Yeah, go ahead. Go ahead and continue with your.
We were just starting with superintendent report, and I talked about the SRO and the interview process and thanked you for being a part of the interview process. And I talked to you earlier about we've made a selection and now it's in the hands of Phoenix PD to make that transition. We do. Yeah, the same fellow we interviewed. Yeah. And he went through an interview process at the high school as well after we met with them that Kaylin did. And so I don't anticipate any changes until the fall officially, but that's the Phoenix Police Department kind of how they're going to transition that. Sergeant Hull will still oversee the SRO program. I talked about the tennis courts, the timing for that. We're hoping to get bids and start construction on that at the high school in the fall to be ready for the 2025 season, which is really exciting. And then I gave a quick update on responding to our work session with the city and their request that we do some outreach for our constituents in our community. And Joe Zavala is preparing information with the Phase One and Phase Two report, the aerial photos, the information Jonathan shared. There's also some really good information, a tech memo that Jay sent to the city already that will include that has a lot of information as well. So we'll put that out on social media and social media and our website to make sure that we share that as much as we can prior to the April 17th meeting at the city. And then I was just wrapping up when talking about preschool. We have many options on the table for next year, one being looking over, taking over the Family Nurturing Center. They have to still work with the board a little bit on their end. But we have some, some good viable options to start a preschool there with their guidance the first year and then hopefully take that over from then on. And it'll be essentially a no general fund cost due to preschool promised dollars that'll be coming in. Also, Ashland YMCA has been very interested in having a site in talent, and so we're working on some space for them to really hit the kind of a mixed-use preschool. They won't be preschool promise, but they could be they could be private pay, scholarship pay, and that that'd really help in talent. And then we also, we are finishing one year with our partnership with Ivy School, who is already on our talent campus with 18 students and their preschool promise organization, and that's been a great partnership. So and that's in addition to the headstarts that we've already had here in Phoenix and in Orchard Hill. So really excited about doing some good work for preschool to get some kids ready for kindergarten. So that's all I had.
Very exciting. Thank you, Brent. Any questions for Brent? So Brent, just because this all kind of came about pretty quickly on the preschool promise thing. So what that'll look like is we're going to buy the modulars essentially that are there. That's what's proposed tonight. Is to buy the modulars and then we staff. We staff the preschool?
Yeah, so it'd be our, our staff. The, the one thing that we want to do as far as advertising as soon as possible too, is to advertise it to our family. Preschool's promise does not guarantee students in your district to be in that preschool. Even though Ivy School and Tiffany can correct me if I'm wrong, but I think 15 of the 18 students are Phoenix talent kids. We would, we would like them to be all Phoenix talent kids, but the, the, it's not guaranteed with preschool promise. But we would get those monies and then we would staff it with our, we would post a preschool teacher and some aides to be able to staff that. Great.
A question for you, Brent?
Yeah.
We are supposed to buy the what's the story on buying the buildings?
Yeah, so good question. So the, the, what's up for right now is Tiffany got approval from our Kinder Launch. Esser-funded grant to utilize $100,000 for the purchase of the modulars. And Family Nurturing Center has been very generous. It, it's probably going to cost a little bit more than that, so we'll have to leverage grants or some other funding sources to buy, buy the modulars, but the big chunk of it will come from these, these grant dollars. So again, it wouldn't be general fund dollars. It'd also include playground, the upgrades they've made and things of that nature.
This would be rollout for fall, right? We would just be seamless and service just with different staff.
Yeah, and actually what we plan on doing is using it for some Kinder Launch programming for this summer. Sorry, Brick, I didn't, I didn't hear you. You had another question.
I guess it's all right. I would just say we own that property and, but we're going to come up with money to to utilize it. I guess it's all good.
Yeah. They spent about $300,000 putting infrastructure and the modulars in. And so this is a, this is a, I mean, I think they're getting out of the direct service business. They're looking, really looking at kind of nurturing centers for whole family, even though they do have some direct service in Metford that they're going to move preschool promise slots to.
Okay, yeah, we're good.
Thanks. Any other questions on that?
Doesn't look like it. Thank you so much. Okay, next item is the consent agenda. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I move to approve the consent agenda.
Thank you, Dawn. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you, Polly. Any objections? Okay, hearing none, the consent agenda is approved. We will now move to action items. First action item is 2425 academic calendar. Brett?
Yeah, I shared this information. It's largely the same, some of the big or notable changes that that first Tuesday, right after Labor Day, we will just, we will start with our all, all students that day. And the reason being, and I saved this for the calendar, is we did get our summer school grant, so we get a big chunk. Not everybody did in the state, and you may have heard some controversy about that. But we did get that and we'll be able to do some, a lot of our transition activities from fifth to sixth, from eighth to ninth. And obviously Kinder, Kinder Launch during the summer. And so we feel like we can start right up on that Tuesday. In addition, this will probably be the last year we have the two extra in-service days. We'll, we'll probably move those back into instructional time next year. So and go back to a regular five-day in-service. Those are the main changes. I know every year we talk about, do we want to get out two days early and not have the two extra days at spring break? And it's a resounding heck, no, keep the two days at spring break from staff, students, families, you name it. So that's it.
Hey? Do I have a motion?
I move to approve the 2425 academic calendar as presented.
And that?
Thank you, Polly. Thank you, Nancy. Any discussion? Okay. Hearing none, we will vote. Just going to go in the order that I see everybody. So Sarah?
Yes.
Polly?
Yes.
Dawn?
Yes.
Rebecca? I think that was a yes. Someone here asked, okay. Nancy?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
He's giving a, oh, and a visual. Thank you, Rick. It's very meta with the phone through the Zoom, through the through Brent's computer. Yes. Okay, that one passes. Thank you so much. Calendar is approved. Okay, next item of business is the superintendent contract. And I will just say I hope you saw the letter. I hope the letter encapsulated as much as possible in one page. All of the great discussion I had to try to be very high level with that. So thank you for your understanding. If a specific thing you mentioned didn't make it, it was a very high-level letter. So thank you all again for that awesome session, feedback session, and very excited to present this contract. Do I have a motion?
I move to approve the three-year superintendent contract for Brent Barry as presented.
I'll second.
Thank you, Polly. Thank you, Rebecca. Discussion?
Thank you, Brent, for all you do.
Thank you. And I think I mentioned this at the session last time, too. Really appreciate the feedback and the, the things to work on and making a plan for that and continue to do the things you highlighted that are going well.
Okay, I think we're ready to vote. Sarah?
Yes.
Polly?
Yes.
Dawn?
Yes.
Rebecca?
Yes.
Nancy?
Yes.
Rick? I vote yes. Contract is approved. Brent, you're stuck with us for three more years. Very exciting.
Wouldn't want to be stuck with anybody else.
Awesome. Okay. And next, another very exciting item is the Esser capital expenditure. And Brent, do you want to just summarize once more?
Yeah, thank you. And Tiffany can share a little bit more. And thanks for Tiffany to getting on this. She was at a conference at the beginning of spring break and she worked a couple of days when she got back and worked on getting this approved. And so appreciate us, the board hearing this tonight and making a decision. But it's, I think it's a really good use of funds. We do have it approved through the state. Anything over 25,000 for capital, we need board approval. And so that's why it's on for action. But Tiffany, do you have anything else to add on this?
I just want to add, this is part of our Kinder Jump Start grant that we received a few years ago. So we're in year three of three. We have about $200,000 left in that. Last year, Kinder Jump Start cost us about 84,000. We anticipate using about 100,000 because we're going to add high dosage tutoring to the program we had last year. The first year we did it, we were only notified a few weeks before we needed to spend it. So we did have Kinder Jump Start, but it was very small, just a few weeks. And so that's why we have this rolled over money. And so it's using 100,000 out of that Kinder Jump Start, which is Esser Funds, but that special grant, it's the state's Esser Funds. That's why we need approval. But if we didn't use it, we would lose it anyhow. And even though I think we might have more costs this summer, getting that summer school grant will help with transportation and some of those expensive costs that we can just use for those incoming kinders anyhow. So it's exciting to be able to use it for capital improvements. And we do plan to have, if the board approves, our Kinder Jump Start from Talent Elementary, since we're doing seismic upgrades there, to hold that in that site this summer so that we can use the goals.
Can you talk about the tutoring that you just mentioned? What is that?
So we started a pilot in the winter on high dosage tutoring, which is now part of the Early Literacy Grant that we can use early literacy grant funds for high dosage tutoring. And so it's virtual. We've selected students based on their reading scores. In our first pilot, we had students of mostly K5. They were all students who lost their homes in the fire that we offered tutoring and that we're still falling behind in reading. In this next round for winter, and we just started our spring term, we've offered it to students who are performing below the 25th percentile, so that bottom quartile in basic reading, so decoding in kindergarten through third grade. And we added some fourth and fifth graders just because we had some slots using the Early Literacy Grant. So that's with the Oregon State University and the Intensive Reading Institute. It's online. It's the tutoring sessions are in the evenings or on the weekends. So the tutors call, they're all licensed tutors, highly trained. The materials are high quality. And the tutors call the families to set up tutoring sessions that work best for them. And so we're collecting data on it now to see. So this summer, we're pretty excited. They have a summer bridge program to provide six weeks of tutoring to prep kids for kindergarten and reading. So you know I love that. So we're going to actually offer it to all incoming kinders. And we're going to launch that at our Kinder Launch for families to sign up. And we're going to ask that every new kindergarten either attends our six-week Kinder Jump Start and/or, because we would love them to do both, does virtual tutoring. But the expectation will be to do some extra prep in literacy to get kids ready for kindergarten. So we're pretty excited about that.
Very exciting. Would anyone like to make a motion on the action item before us?
I'll do it. I move to approve the Esser expenditures in the amount of 100,000 for Kinder Jump Start modules and equipment as presented.
I'll second.
Thank you, Polly. Thank you, Sarah. Discussion, further discussion?
I'm really interested to see how this could, sorry, Michael, to see how this, the data at the end of this, to see how ready for kindergarten. That's going to be really interesting to see how, how well this works, how this intentional process and really focus on, on this instruction, pre-instruction really helps with our strategic plan and helps kids learn. I mean, bottom line helps kids learn, but meeting the goals of that strategic plan, really exciting. Thank you, Tiffany.
If I can add to something else exciting, you know, I like to talk about this, is the family engagement that's coming. The reason we're doing virtual tutoring at home, I should mention, is so families are involved and how to help support their children learn to read at home too. And after the fire, we lost a lot of preschool and daycare. Something else we're doing is we're offering a class. Laura Mallett has brought some guests from the Laura Mallett has brought some guests from the north to, for our families, our Spanish speaking families. They did a class on banking, a class on starting a business. And the class they're doing now is how to run an at-home daycare center and get licensed. And that is needed for our economy. It's needed in Phoenix and talent, but it's also really benefiting our families. And that's a full class too. So really trying to provide that structure. Not only is preschool good for kids, but it's also helping with that childcare. So families can, can go to work and know their kids are taken care of. So.
Thank you so much. Any more discussion? So I'll just say, I've been beating the, the preschool and the after-school care drum for a while now. I'm going to continue to, to beat it. And I just appreciate the innovative thinking, Brent. This is a testament to your relationships with community members and community partners. Tiffany, incredible job figuring out how to make the funding work, getting approval for it. Really, really exciting opportunity that I'm fully in support of. So thank you so much. And yes, I look forward to seeing how this helps our kids be more prepared for school and help with their literacy, but also help our families to meet a much needed need in the community. So very, very exciting. Okay, let's vote. Sarah?
Yes.
Polly?
Yes.
Dawn?
Yes.
Rebecca?
Yes.
Nancy?
Yes.
Rick? Rick votes yes. I vote yes. And yes, I like Kelly Soder doing some heavy lifting on this as well. Yes. Thank you for that, Brent. Okay. That item is approved. Very exciting. Let's get to work on that. Super, super exciting stuff. Okay, we have a couple of items on information and discussion or just one item on information and discussion. The board meeting calendar for next year is already there. Any questions about that or discussion?
One question I had, and I don't know if I dreamt this or not, but did we talk about changing the timing of jab meeting? Or does that fit in November still? Or did I dream that? And, and it works okay for I think our school and our staff, but I thought the board may have talked about that. And if not?
I think Brent, maybe you and I had a discussion about it and then the jab meeting went phenomenally well and everyone was really glad we had it when we did and the way that we did. And so we sort of dropped that conversation. That might be what you're thinking of.
Sounds good. Yeah. It works well for us if it works for the board. And this is largely unchanged with the, with the additional work sessions. We have three throughout the year. So.
I just have a question about the timing of the July meeting. It looks like it's reverted back to the noon meeting that we had adjusted.
That should be yeah, I think that's TBA actually, because depending on what we do for a retreat type thing, if it is a work session in the evening or we do an extended, extended time. So oh, the July 11th meeting, you mean? Yeah, that should be 6:00 PM. Sorry.
I'll change that.
Good catch.
Were you talking about the summer board retreat? July 25th meeting, Brent?
I thought that's what you were talking about, but no, the time on the 11th will change. Yeah.
Okay. I did say noon, but I meant 2:00 PM. So thank you. Yeah.
Dawn?
Um, yeah, I was going to say, I think there was discussion about the jab meeting to make sure, because it comes out right when the report card is coming. And so we were concerned that that would give the staff enough time. Plus it's right in between our conference. And so then there's a big gap on reporting from the, about the conference for like a month later. And so I know we've had conversations. I just wanted to remind, that's the conversation I remember, but that could also be a dream as well. But I, I think.
No, that sounds familiar, Dawn. Thank you.
And so when I was thinking about this and this, this is just a consideration for the board possibly is maybe moving that January work session to November and putting the, and I can talk to our team about this too, what they would like. But we could switch the January. It'll spread out the work sessions a little more. So we would kind of have one in July, November and March. And then we could do our mid-year jab meeting in January. But that's, that's another option to switch those. So
That could be helpful to, to be able to have some discussion after the fall conference at a work study session, just to debrief and share with each other in a work session instead of at a board meeting. Which I know is still a board meeting, but just the format.
Yes. Yeah, it's a good idea. I'd be in support of that. Rick, did you have something?
Just as long as we have the jab meeting, that's all I care.
You guys hear that?
As long as we have the jab meeting.
I can certainly present it to administrators and say, hey, we're thinking about doing this. I know it. I, I kind of think I remember our conversation, Michael. I felt, I felt stressed for our admin team at that time.
But that time of year, yeah.
Obviously, yeah. January would be, that would be the end of the semester week, but I still think it would be okay to have some time there to prep in January. Also, another report for grad rates come out in January as well. So it's good timing. So. So Denise, go ahead.
I was just gonna say, whatever I'm, you know, I was just putting that out there, but I'm, whatever staff says works best for them. I think it's really a vital meeting that we have. And I was talking to some other school board members about it. And some of the things that have come and came out of that meeting and some other districts may do something similar on this. And so I think it's really important, like Rick was saying, as long as we have it, I just want to re, like, I, I'm really willing to be flexible and do whatever is best for admin. But it seems like the report cards come out, it's right before Christmas break and conferences. And so whatever works here for them.
And to Sarah's point, it's weird to talk about the annual convention a month later.
Yeah.
You know, it's like when we talk about, go to that, and then we really don't get that on information and discussion until December, where a work session could have a time to do that. So.
That to me seems like one of the biggest benefits for us is to reserve that time right after the convention to talk through things.
Denise and I will confirm with our team to see if we can make that switch and then we'll modify that for the action item next time.
That sounds good. Yeah. And then in the meantime, everybody can kind of chew on that over the next couple of weeks and we'll decide at our April 18th meeting. Speaking of which, smooth transitions. The next meeting agenda is there for your review. So if you have any questions or concerns about that, please reach out.
Other than that? It is a daytime, daytime meeting and typically I, we do have executive session on here, but typically we don't have an executive session during our eight daytime meeting just to honor your guys' time when you're, I mean, really try to do it from 10 to noon. So I don't anticipate having anything. So I think we can leave that off. And if we do have to go into executive session, maybe we could do something at the end of the meeting.
Or even if it's short enough, maybe a quick 15 minute type of thing versus a half hour. I would find that helpful. Thank you.
Sounds good. Thank you.
Thank you for the call out on the daytime meeting too, Brent. It's 10 AM at TMS. All right. Thank you all so much. Whoops, I just muted myself. I hope you have a great evening and we are adjourned.
Night.
Nancy and Dawn have a great time.
Yes.
In New Orleans. We can't wait to hear about it.
Thank you. Good night.
And I know Dawn will be safe because she's on the pay sport. So it works out well. All right. See you all.